November 17th, 2015, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting will come to order. We will have our invocation, we'll have prayer first, and then the pledge to allegiance. Let us all stand. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for your presence here today with us. We ask you to guide our thoughts, guide our conversation, guide our interaction, and help our understanding. Lord, help us to do the best thing that we can for the city of Longview, for its citizens, and for its future. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
Will you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Our first item of business on today is approval of the October 20th, 2015 Planning and Zoning Minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes from October? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion approved minutes is read. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes of October 2015. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes stand approved. Our next item is the approval of our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion.
Excuse me?
Yes. Commissioner Parsons will be leaving for the vote on the consent agenda. If there is nothing to be moved from the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Consent agenda stands approved. Okay, we'll now proceed to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers plaits. The procedure for the public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be open and testimony will be heard in the following order: the applicant, staff, the general public, those in support and in opposition to the requests. If you are part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than having each individual restate the same information. When addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed, and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on the requests. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on December Our first item on the regular agenda for tonight, P-15-13. Consider application P-15-13, the Palms Unit 3 filed by Anwar Khalifa, to plat approximately 7.625 acres of Alex Jordan survey, A-360 into 19 residential lots located on the north side of East Marshall Avenue, west of Delia Drive. Is the applicant or someone representing the applicant present? There being no one representing the applicant present, staff?
Thank you, Chairperson Murphy. The applicant is requesting to plat 19 residential lots. As you can see, Palms Lane, which connects to US Highway 80, it is not there right now, but it will, it is in the process of being constructed. Today, staff has received a letter of credit. The plat does comply with all of City of Longview requirements, and staff recommends approval of this plat. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions from any commissioners for staff? There being no questions for staff at this time, we will open up the public hearing on P-15-13. Is anyone present who wishes to speak in support of this? No one coming forward? Is there anyone wishes to come and speak in opposition to this? No one coming forward? The public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve P-15-13. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve application P-15-13. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move to the second item on our regular agenda for today. Z-15-18. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z-15-18 filed by 315 Properties LLC requesting a rezon from multifamily MF3 to General Retail GR for approximately 20.228 acres of AB41C Skilling Survey, tract 68, section 5, located on the east side of Gilmore Road, south of Fairmont Street. Is the applicant or someone representing the applicant present? Please come.
My name is Keen Gidry, representing 315 Properties at 106 East Loop 281. Currently, right now, we have about three acres from the front edge of Gilmore Road that's currently zoned, general retail. And we have some development opportunities, and part of the contract would be to turn this into one general retail location for general, turn the multifamily into all general retail.
Does any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? There being no questions at this time, staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezon from multifamily 3 to general retail for approximately 20 acres located on the east side of Gilmore Road, south of Fairmont. Gilmore Road is a principal arterial which is appropriate for retail-type uses. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So it hardly comes up behind a row of housing on Fairmont, so there's not a, there's not a?
This duplex is a multifamily.
Okay, so it's still that way?
Yeah.
All right.
Do we have any additional questions for staff at this time? If we have no further questions for staff at this time, we'll open up the public hearing on Z-15-18. Anyone present who wish to come to speak in support of this application? Say, anyone present wishes to come and speak in opposition to this application? There being none, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval of Z-15-8. Second.
Approval of Z-15-18, just to clarify. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Application Z-15-18 is approved. Next item on our regular agenda, Z-15-19. Public hearing will be held to consider application number Z-15-19 filed by Bruce Jackson requesting a rezon from single-family SF2 to multifamily MF2 for approximately 3.0 acres of AB113J Jackson survey, tract 20, section 1, located at 111 Ruth Lynn Drive. Is applicant or representative here to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Scott Davis. I'm an administrator at Haven Care Nursing and Rehab Facility, and what we want this, what we have this request for is to rezon from multifamily, from single family to multifamily so that we can build a therapy center, which would include approximately 25 rooms, a dining room, a day room, and offices. We want to add the addition to the current facility there now.
Any questions for the applicant? There being no questions at this time for the applicant, staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezon from single-family 2 to multifamily 2 to allow for an addition for the nursing, the existing nursing home located at 111 Ruth Lynn Drive. When the facility was built, nursing homes were allowed in single-family zoning districts with a specific use permit. This was in the 70s, and at that time, they did receive a specific use permit for a nursing home. In 19, around that time, the zoning, after that time, the zoning ordinance was changed, and nursing homes are no longer, currently, nursing homes are no longer allowed in single family. With them doing an addition, they're required to come into compliance with zoning, and therefore, they're requesting to rezon to multifamily, which multifamily does allow for nursing homes in our current ordinance. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff at this time? There being none, we will open up public hearing for Z-15-19. There be anybody present who wishes to speak in support of this application? There be anybody present who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? There being none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there motion?
I approve Z-15-19.
It's been moved in second that we approve Z-15-19. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Z-15-19 stands approved.
Excuse me, can I ask who made the second on that motion? You said something. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our regular agenda, PD-15-15. Public hearing will be held to consider application PD-15-15 filed by Premier Management LLC requesting to amend PD-15-06 to revise the site plan to allow for a drive-through window and adjustments to building sizes located on the south side of East Loop 281 between Judson Road and Airline Road. Applicant or representative present, please come forward at this time.
Scott, Zone Premier Management, I know you guys are, you guys are getting tired of hearing this hashed over project, like Steve told me coming in here, but we're getting almost a little closer to the end. Construction's underway. What we're coming to, the commission for tonight, is basically some property line changes and a drive-through window on our next restaurant. Now, you recall, the last time I came through, we had, we did the Bubba's 33 deal, which is a subsidiary of Texas Roadhouse, so that's under construction. The pipes are going in the ground right now. Now, we've carved out another restaurant here that Angela is highlighting, and we were wanting to put a drive-through window in that restaurant. And we had the lease signed on that restaurant, and we're getting ready to announce who it is hopefully this weekend. So what we're asking for is, one, to change the property lines, and, two, to get the spot zoning for the drive-through window, a special use permit, a special use permit.
Within the plan development.
So, once we get this passed, hopefully tonight, we'll have these three properties done, and we'll have a property to the east, right over there, and we'll probably have to come back on that property again to amend the size of the restaurant, because it's done, but we've changed the footprint again. So we'll be coming to see you guys in January. Then, we have the last property, which is way over here on the left, one more over, Angela, please, right here. This is, the one she just pointed to is XL Clinic, one over here to the right, Angela. That's XL Clinic that we're building for Dr. DePiscuali and the ER doctors. Then, we have one site between that and Golden Corral. Here again, footprint won't be right, so we'll be here in March for that one. So this is just a moving target of lines that we're pulling out of the air, and as we get the leases signed and the customer committed, we come back through here and get the blessing. That's kind of it in a nutshell. But it's going to all get done, it's going to be beautiful. We're redoing the streets, we're redoing the infrastructure, the access points, creating new easements, abandoning alleys, we're just doing a whole lot of work out there right now, and it may not look like it, but it's slowly coming down the pipeline. Anybody got any questions about, other than revealing the restaurant?
Would you give us your address for the record, please, sir?
I'm sorry, 235 Waters Edge in Longview.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, no questions this time for the applicant, staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD-15-06 to revise the site plan to allow for a drive-through window and adjustment to building sizes located on the south side of East Loop 281 between Judson Road and Airline Drive. The applicant previously submitted a plan development with the site plan that was approved by City Council in July of 2015. This site plan has been revised, and therefore, it must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. The original plan development, site plan, proposed around 5,500 square feet for site 3 and 4, which is where the Bubba's is, and then that smaller one. However, this new site plan has proposed approximately about 9,000 square feet for the Bubba's, which is site 3, and approximately 3,000 square feet for size 4 with a drive-through window. The parking requirements will meet the requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance. As stated in the previously, previous plan development, solid evergreen shrubbery and a four-foot solid fence will be placed along the south property line to provide buffering for the neighbors along Skyline Drive. There will be one direct driveway access permitted to Skyline Drive from Cathy Street, and no lighting shall impact any of the surrounding residential properties. This development will have shared driveways onto Loop 281. Clay Street, Cathy Street, and the alleyways will be abandoned, and the applicant will meet all other City of Longview codes through the development process. Loop 281 is a principal arterial which is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff regarding this application? None at this time? We'll now open up the public hearing for PD-15-15. Say, anyone present who wishes to come and speak in support of this application? Say, anyone present who wishes to come and speak in opposition to it? Please come forward, state your name and address for us. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Tibbetts, and I live on Skyline, and I'm not really opposed or for. I just want to make sure that there are no entrances to Skyline Drive from these new offices and the new restaurants, because we have a traffic problem already. There are small people on the street, we have small children, three families with small kids that go to school and wait on the streets to catch the buses, and the traffic since, just since canes went in, the traffic is horrendous, and they come around, and I don't know, they must eat like crazy, and then they throw all their garbage on our street, which is awful. And we don't have speed limits. I know that y'all don't control that, but we don't have a speed sign at all on our street, and it would be wonderful if we could do a rumble strip to slow the traffic down. My husband actually would like the spikes that the police put up, but we're not asking for that. We just want this street to be a little bit controlled. Yes, one side of it is going to be industrial, or I don't even know what restaurants are called anymore, but our side is still people, and we live there, and we plan to stay there. We don't want to move, but we don't want speedsters running up and down the street throwing their trash out either, and I don't really know what the solution is. I'm a little concerned about this drive-through thing. I'm not sure exactly where it's going to drive through to.
On, on site 4, if you, the curse of site 4, there's a drive-through window.
Okay, and what's it going to face? Is it going to be like canes?
Yes, it's going to be kind of like Raising Canes where it have a drive-through window.
Like behind it?
It looks like that the proposal on this site plan, that the drive-through window is facing site 5, or facing, I guess if you're looking to the north, it's facing east.
So it's going to go up Cathy Street?
No, it's facing east.
Yeah, don't tell me east, west. Tell me right or left, okay.
Do you see where the arrow is?
Yes, I see that.
It looks like it's facing towards Raising Canes.
Oh, I got you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So there is a possibility that it would increase traffic on Skyline. Is that true or not?
I'm not a traffic engineer, I would have to get with our engineer to...
Yeah, well, well, I'm going to assume that just because canes and nukes, now, we didn't find a difference with Golden Corral, because it's shut off, but when nukes came in, lots of traffic on Skyline. And when canes came in, I don't even know why there's more traffic there, and I guess I've gone over my five minutes. Does anybody have a ruler? You can whack me on the head, right? Yeah, I, you know, I just want our street to may, be a street that we can live on and people can be safe on, and, you know, progress is great. We all need progress, but we can't lose sight of the fact that we are people who love our house, and we don't want to be pushed out. Since all those restaurants came in, it's just Golden Corral, nukes, and canes. Our property value has dropped $10,000, not our taxes, mind you, just our property value. And, you know, like, what's going to happen to us? You know? That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tibbetts, and staff does have your, your outline of the written comments, so those will be considered as we move forward with the development. Say, anyone else?
Yes, my name is Ron Roof, and I'm at 120 Skyline, and I've stood before here since they started with Albertsons 20 years ago. And we can't fight it, we don't want to fight it and everything else, but we were made a promise by this board up here that there would be no entrances from that property on the Skyline, and now you're going to keep Cathy open?
At the last, at the last council meeting, it was approved with the Cathy Street open.
So, again, you've gone against what you've said. I'm sorry to say that, but it's true. Like I say, when the others come through, it was the same thing, but I thought you'd at least honor that. Do you realize what that's going to do to that street? We now cannot get out on Skyline Drive. We go to Skyline and go to Airline. In the morning, you can't get out there because of the traffic light and the brilliance of the engineer that decided to get rid of the right-hand turn lane. I have to go out of the other way and can barely get out of the street in the morning. When these things come through, do I have to call the police to get out of my house? What are we going to do? And you have said that there will be no entrances, but you're going to use Cathy. Is this true?
That is correct. There is going to be one entrance onto Skyline.
That means the trucks now that come down our road to go around to come into the restaurants that are there, nukes and the others, will come down there. We'll skip more of the 18-wheelers on that road too, won't we? I don't think that's fair. I'm not fighting what's there, not fighting the fences, anything else, I think that's nice, but I don't think you would like to have all of the people and the traffic coming from that development coming into the front of your house? What can I say? And if you want to check my words, you can go back through all the other meetings, and I've said the same thing, and you'll hear yourselves come out and say, there will be no entrances on the Skyline Drive. So that's where I stand. There are only several of us that own property on there. Mr. Thorne owns the rest of it. So really, what do we have? My property value has dropped. I don't want to move, but I just think it'd be a little bit in consideration of people if you would think about what you're doing with that. Keep the traffic out to the front. Our yard right now with the restaurants there at night looks like a supermarket parking lot because of the lighting, and you're going to add more of that. We can live with that, but I can't live with the traffic. Do you have any answers, any solutions, or just say, tough? I don't know what it is.
Well, we'll note your, your comments, Mr. Roof, regarding things like traffic and lighting and so forth, and what we try to do is minimize negative impact whenever developments go in as a whole.
Well, they have not done that so far. That's kind of what I'm saying. I'm sorry, am I going to get the same treatment I've had for the last 20 years on this?
And through the development process, staff does address lighting. Lighting is a, is a big concern that we have.
You can read the newspaper in my front yard at night.
Okay. If, if lighting is a concern with those exist to, to existing sites, we can, we can address those.
The traffic is the main thing.
Okay.
If Cathy's coming through, it's going to be totally impossible, because that is a shortcut now for everything, and everyone coming out of that center, rather than fight the corner or go out on the unit, they're going to come through that way. It's going to be a big problem. And like I say, I've stood here about five times, and every time, the people here at the board said there would be no entrance on the Skyline. I take you for your word. Please give us some consideration.
All right, sir. Thank you. There be anyone else?
I want to add something if I might. There's going to be a 100% improvement in the traffic flow when I build my two entrances onto the loop. Right now, we have Airline that has a light, and then we have Golden Corral slash nukes. We're putting two more access points. So that traffic's going to want to come out the front. Nobody, if you go out the back, go out Judson Road, there's no light, you're just waiting. They're going to come out the front, take a right hand, hit the median, flip around. It's going to change the entire traffic pattern once this development's finished. Now, I appreciate his comments about the neighborhood, and we need to address those as far as the speed bumps possibly, and that's, here again, that's not in our job description, so to speak. That'll have to be done by the engineering study of the, with the city, but I just want to impress upon everybody that everything is going to change, just like when they put the medians in the loop. New traffic patterns will be learned, and they'll flip around, it'll be very safe. So I think it'll minimize their concerns.
Thank you.
Scott, excuse me, could you, here. Could you just talk us through with the era, the ingress and egress, and talk about the Cathy? Is that a two-way or only one way out, or what is it going to be?
Well, Cathy was designed to not line up with a access point on the loop, because just what they feared, you'd have people hitting Cathy and zipping all the way through, so we have offset Cathy to be a secondary road. The primary road is the access point between Texas Roadhouse, Bubba's... The primary road is the access point between Texas Roadhouse, Bubba's, and the, the new restaurant we're bringing. That, that's the primary point to the Loop. In addition to that, we're coming over here, we don't have enough space to show you, but maybe right where her arrow is, and we're producing another access point that's been approved by TexDOT already. So we've, we've already spent the money to lower this big, this big 12-foot hill that was out there that made it impossible to drive a car up over. We've spent $100,000 right now lowering AT&amp;T lines, rerouting city water lines, and moving the dirt. So now we have created a place that you can actually come into the development with a second access point. So as you can see, we're creating multiple ways into the front of the subdivision. That's where your 18-wheelers will be coming to deliver food. They're not going to, they're not going to sit down here on Judson Road. I don't know if you set where, where Skyline hits Judson Road. It's impossible to get out, and 18-wheelers are just not going to do it. They're going to go, take a right hand out, hit the Loop at Airline, catch the light, flip around, go back west. I mean, it's logical. 18-wheelers don't want to wait. They want a lighted corner to flip around.
Ask the people from Golden Corral then what they do with theirs. At the 6 o'clock in the morning, refrigerator units running, and the 5:30, 6 o'clock garbage removal.
And they're going to want to come around the back parking lot. They're going to come right down Skyline, right up Cathy. It's human nature.
With a dumpster probably right along the back.
If you gentlemen would like your comments on the record, you're going to need to come to the podium.
We can do that.
But, but, but the dumpster, one more thing, the dumpster, highly controlled by planning. We can't, we don't just go out and plop a dumpster, say that's where we want to carry our trash. It has to be approved with the, with people in mind, with the banging and the noise and all that. It's highly, highly improved on where that's going to sit.
Thank you.
Really, to just reaffirm what I said, we have 18-wheelers coming down there now. They go down, they make a mistake, they come back and forth, they try to get back into the back of Golden Corral, that type of thing. You put this street in now, they're going to come down and go there. When they're up there, they're going to come down here and go out. There isn't much swinging room, so you're going to have trouble with that, too. But as long as there's an exit there, I guarantee you, there's going to be 10 people figuring out how that's a shortcut to come through it. If you don't believe me, stand at any service station that has a corner lot and watch the people drive through, just so they miss the light. But that's a very big concern there, and like I say again, I have nothing against the development. Mr. Thorne has done a fine job on all of this, although we got one hell of a mess over there right now with garbage and junk, but that happens. This is being built. No problems with that. I am just disappointed with the word that I had, that there would be no entrance out here, and how many of you were here when that was done? I don't know, but I was assured there would be no entrance out here. Now, is this a medical center?
Ye, yes, that, the, the site two is a ER.
Are the ambulances going to come in and out of there?
I think that's a possibility.
Thank you. Where do you live? I'll come, I got a servant, I'll come by your house three, four times tonight.
I live near the fire station, so I can hear the fire station, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So like I say, this, this is what I'm saying. I have no objections. Mr. Thorne has done what he said. I understand it. We got a hell of a mess there, but it isn't his fault. They've done well on the protection and to bring up the back end high enough and greenery and fences. This is fine, but that's one thing that I don't know how we can tolerate, and I thought I was safe on that. I also thought I was safe when they told me that, after Albertsons, that this could not be rezoned and put back into retail, and that was done without any notice to any of us, but that's past, and that's over with. Let's forget about it. We're talking about one problem here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Here's, one more question. I'm Ron Roof Jr.
Well, you'll need to come up to the mic, please.
And one more problem is my real concern, and you just had it up there. You were showing on the corner there of Airline and Sky, and the Loop. There is a real, real traffic problem there as we now stand. There isn't a right-hand turn lane on the Loop. You try to leave that about 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, and I, even these customers are going to be upset. You're, you're going to have to address the traffic flow or whoever does that on, on the Loop and Airline. It, it's just a single line out there. You can wait a good 30 minutes trying to get pull out there and going out to Loop, because they eliminated the right-hand turn lane. Don't know why, but just a point that is really frustrating right now, and with this traffic, it's going to get even to be a bigger problem.
The right-hand turn lane on the Loop? Which, which street are you saying the right-hand turn lane on?
From Airline onto the Loop.
From Airline onto the Loop. It is just a dual lane thing, and with the traffic light there is the traffic al, almost back all the way up to Hollybrook.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One more, two minutes. Is your name Mr. Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
So can I address him?
No.
Okay, so I'll address you.
Okay.
Listen, okay? So, so I'm wondering if Mr. Scott has any idea where the garbage is or the, the things are going to go? Are they going to go at the end of the street by Skyline, or where will they be?
Are you talking about the garbage, the dumpsters?
Receptacles, the dumpsters, yes.
If you look where there, he's pointing.
Yes.
It's going right there, and then the one for the ER is going on the opposite, right there.
Okay, so not by Skyline. That's good. Okay, thank you.
And if you have any further questions, like on those kind of things, if you'll contact the staff down at Zoner, they'd be more than happy to, to walk you through these things. Okay? Say anyone else? If there be no one else, the public hearing on application PD-15-15 is now closed. Do we have a motion, commission, or do you have questions? Sure, go ahead.
Angela, is it a requirement that they have a back exit to Skyline?
You know, I wouldn't know without the fire marshal being here. Planning and zoning does not require that, that entrance, but it may be required for fire protection. I'm not sure.
Angela?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of questions. Can we request that the city do a traffic study in certain areas?
I think, you know, I don't know. I think we'd have to talk to our city engineer. Traffic studies are typically, I mean, they could be done for certain areas. I think there is a, a formula that he uses to war, decide whether a traffic study is warranted or not. I would have to get with our city engineer to see.
I think that might be a good idea. After we get these restaurants built, and there is an issue on Airline at the Loop, and so I know that the city has done traffic studies before, when the new schools were built, around the new schools, and so this is similar in terms of new development, and, and I think that that might be something that we could help the citizenry of this area with, and just see if, if we can ask that that be done. I don't think it can be a formal motion or anything by us.
No, I, I think we'd have to check with our city engineer, like I said before. He, there's some type of formula he does use to decide whether or not a traffic study is warranted or not, but I will get with him to talk about that as well as that right turn lane that goes onto the Loop from Alpine or Airline.
Okay, and I've sat on this commission now five months or so. I don't remember ever making a commitment that Cathy would be open. Can you address that from here?
It was, it was on the site plan, and it was, it was on the previous staff report. Cathy was going to remain open. It was just going to be abandoned. He was going to abandon it, so it's not going to be a street, but it's going to be an entrance, but it's the only one other than when you get further down to nukes. Golden Corral, we did limited, we limited their driveway access and said no driveway access onto Skyline, but Cathy was always going to remain open.
So it was always going to remain open?
Yes.
But it's not going to be called Cathy anymore?
No, because he's going to, he has an abandonment that he has submitted to abandon Clay Street, Cathy Street, and the alleyways.
Okay.
Yes.
We're here, as far as the request, we're looking at just approving the drive-through window, right?
That's correct. The drive-through window and the adjustments to the building sizes, yes, sir.
It's not really the entrances that we're talking about.
That was already previously approved. Yes, sir.
Interests were approved when we approved the PD.
Yes, sir. It was, it was approved in July.
Yeah.
I was just looking at the request here, and it's just talking about the drive-through window.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Really, that's, the PD went in, and when we approved the PD, the PD then get, the developer has to come back to give us specifics, but the overall layout of the PD itself was approved back in July, was it?
Yes, sir.
We have any other questions or comments this time?
I have one more question.
Sure.
About the size of the fence. We're saying a four-foot fence, is that standard? Sometimes like around...
Four-foot is not standard. We typically actually don't require fences adjacent to a street, because the street does act as the buffer, but in this instance, we did request from the developer, from Mr. Thorne, that he install a four-foot fence.
And that might help with the trash issue?
It would, yeah, it would help with the trash, but it would also help with the lighting. I know that there was an adjacent neighbor down the street further along Skyline near Judson Road where the cars, when they were driving at night, their headlights were bothering him, and so for this part, this section of the development, we did request from Scott a four-foot fence.
Okay.
Okay. If there be no other questions or comments, do we have a motion on application 15-15?
I make a motion we approve PD-15-15.
A second.
It's been moved and second to approve application PD-15-15. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. 15-15 stands approved. Staff update, please.
The item at Hawkins Parkway, the hotel, was approved by City Council at the last meeting.
Okay. Do we have any general citizen comment at this time? There being none, Meeting of Planning and Zoning stands adjourned for November 17, 2015.